Good evening, I'm gonna call the Board of Selectmen's meeting to order for Monday, February 25th, 2019, and as required by open meeting law. You are hereby informed that the town will be video and audiotaping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape the meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing no one, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Earlier, we went into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 6, to consider a purchase, exchange, or lease the value of real estate regarding Cornelius Pond, and we're gonna be bringing that back when Michael Lack can join us. And we did approve the executive session minutes for February 4th, 2019, and February 11th, Do I have anyone for weekly briefing? Good evening, Link.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Link Hooper, DPW Director. I want to advise you to avoid Great Western Road between Lothrup and Main Street tomorrow. We are going to be starting an emergency culvert repair. With the rain we had over the weekend, we're actually starting to lose roadway. We had done a temporary repair a week ago, it didn't hold up. So this is gonna be in-depth. I really can't tell you how long, I just know we're gonna be blocking that section of road off to any through traffic, and hopefully it'll be a day, too, and we'll have good news.
Okay. Thank you, Link. Oh, sorry, Ed.
What's the detour going to be?
From Main Street?
Twenty-eighth?
No, Main to Main Street. So you come up here at Great Western, you take Main Street, go down, and you can get back on Great Western if you bank left on Lothrup.
At Lothrup? Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else for weekly briefing? Anybody for public comments and announcements? Hi, Chris.
Hi there, Chris Joyce, voter information. Just want to remind you of some critical dates for voter information especially, but on the 5th of this month, we're going to, at the request of one of the Board of Selectmen, we're going to do a taped program in Channel 18 to recruit more folks for committees. So far, we have approximately 10 chairs who are going to participate, and that represents about 12 committees, actually. And then April 8th, Financial State of Harwich, so we'll be looking for folks who, well, we look for the administrator, TA, chair, the two school board superintendents, school superintendents. The next one is April 22nd, where we do the warrant review, so we'll be paying great attention to what the final warrant looks like, and then we look to the department heads, in some cases, committee chairs, to review the town-approved warrant articles. And then depending on, well, we'll be hosting a candidates' forum, and if there are opposed vacancies, we'll have the League of Women Voters on the 14th of May in the evening run that forum. Before that, any of the candidates who are running unopposed will have brief interviews with them that Jamie's Channel 18 will televise. That's it.
Thank you very much, Chris.
Yep.
Anybody else for public comments and announcements? Ed?
Just a couple of announcements. One, this Saturday, the second, starting at nine o'clock?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty, we'll be holding a budget review all through till noon, and then break for lunch, and then afterwards through the afternoon. It's open to the public.
Actually, eight o'clock, sorry.
Eight o'clock.
We being them, too.
Yes. And then on March 23rd, at the Harwich Cultural Center, the Harwich Grand Bay Festival will be hosting a concert with Greg Greenway and Reggie Harris, two singer-songwriters who grew up together in Virginia, and they have put together a concert, it's sort of a discussion of race relationships in the United States, and it's called "Under the Skin," so.
Thank you, Ed. Anybody else for public comments and announcements? Okay, can I get, excuse me, a motion for the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to present the consent agenda, move adoption of the items thereon, including the minutes of January 28th, regular session, February 4th, executive session, and February 11th, executive session. Approve a petition by Verizon and EverSource to relocate one jointly-owned pole on South Street, accept the resignation of Noreen Donahue from the Wastewater Support Committee, and accept the resignation of Peter Hughes from the Wastewater Support Committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, on to new business. Request for approval of the agreement between the towns of Chatham and Harwich with respect to the formation of a regional school district, possible vote to approve. Scott.
I was gonna say, the superintendent's here, so maybe he can provide a overview.
Good evening, Scott.
Hopefully, this'll be quick.
There's still a type of work to do.
Oh, boy. Thank you, Scott. It's just some section.
Thank you.
Some section.
Is this the same as in the material that we got?
Yeah, it's the same material. What reason? So, at your last meeting, I believe, Terry Russell's here, I was at Chatham giving the budget presentation I gave to you prior to that in Chatham, so Terry was here sharing sort of tweaks to the regional agreement that are really just housekeeping to remove things related to regionalization out, although there were some things that we had reworked, and there was a clerical thing that should've gotten picked up, and I think Don noticed it. It was in the redlined version on page nine, Debt Service D, number two, there was a clause in there that says debt service cost attributable to the district's elementary schools will be assessed to the member town, or to the member town that owns the building, and then it went on to talk about if there was some sort of reorganization, which is moot, there's not. So, all of that has been lined out, so now, in the clean copy that says final draft, that has no redlining, on page eight, Debt Service 2, just reads, "Debt Service Cost Tributal to the District's Elementary Schools Will Be Assessed to the Member Towns That Owns the Building," period, end of story, to address the piece that Don picked up. So I think that that was a concern raised both here and in Chatham.
Thank you, Scott. Don?
I think we're pretty close to approving it before, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the agreement between the towns of Chatham and Harwich with respect to the formation of a regional school district as last amended 21590.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay for the rest of the day.
And B, Cornelius Pond purchase and sale agreement, we'll be bringing that back when Michael Lack has come to speak with us in executive session, so we're gonna move to the warrant article review. Last time, we did these in sections.
Just on Cornelius Pond, that agenda item, we have already voted the purchase and sales agreement.
Right.
The only thing that's left is the conservation restrictions.
Restrictions, right.
We need to update that.
And that's what we're going to discuss in executive session, but then we'll take the vote on the entire thing. Okay, so, moving on to the warrant articles, except, do you wanna do it, yeah, the last one?
Yeah, maybe, Madam Chair, just, we did have a chance, or I had a good chance on Friday to kind of read through kind of each and every one, so you will see some items that are in here, just as a, for instance, we put in the capital plan, so if you can give me some feedback in terms of whether you think that format looks a little better, it definitely is cleaner, but for specifically, what we did was, anything that the board didn't take action on, and again, this is just whether it's gonna be on the final warrant or not, so this isn't a support or deny, or support or decline, it's simply whether it's gonna be on or not. So the first one, and the numbering did change because we did remove one of the items on here. The item that we removed, I probably should say this out loud, is that we had an item on there for easements relative to Phase Two on wastewater, and I kind of was thinking this, and it did come through to fruition, that the town attorney had researched it, and when the board takes an action to vote to award the easement for sewer, as sewer commissioners, you also are drainage commissioners, so you can do the drainage easement and the sewer easement at the same time. So there was no need to have that article, which was designed to kind of do the drainage piece. So that article on easements regarding Phase Two was unnecessary, so that one was taken off because it wouldn't have done anything even if we had approved it.
Oh, sorry, Michael.
Chris, by taking that article out, we voted articles last week by the numbers? Did that screw up the numbers that we voted in the motions?
No, 'cause we also did the, you had the material in front of you, they had the title with it, so the discussion was all focused on the titles.
And we said we would have to renumber based on however we were.
Yeah, 'cause there was another one, too, that I did move the pet burial ground, where I created a section pet burial ground, had that flow hopefully a little bit better, at least logistically.
Coordinated. Mm-hmm. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This isn't a time for this, but I'm thinking that we have to have some agenda for this. Speaking of easements, at least a portion of this, I would presume, unless you've been able to do this totally in road layouts, I'd like to have a discussion about the types of pumps that we're using.
Okay. Well, we'll have easements for the pump stations.
And how we got to the point of approving what we've got approved at this point.
Okay. I was planning on having Dave Young come in to talk about the project, so we can certainly add that to the topics that he'll cover.
I'd just like to do it before there's trucks out there starting to install pumps.
Well, we were gonna have David come back anyway, so.
Right, we were planning on having him come back.
Right. Michael?
That was my comment. I know C.D.M. Smith's coming, and I know that's a topic of conversation I want to have as well.
Okay.
Okay. So the articles that were left to vote on, and certainly I can bring up about the pet burial, how that reflowed, if you would, the first one, though, except the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, 64G, subsection 3A on local excise tax, this is the hotel and motel, which is currently at 4 percent. This would allow for authorization to go to 6 percent, which was consistent with the budget message, about $350,000 should be generated by doing this, and the budget message, that is predicated on balancing the budget to have it go from 4 percent to 6 percent. I would ask, you know, whether the board takes a vote or not to support that, at least have it on there as a placeholder for the discussion.
Okay. Any discussion on that particular item? Ed?
I'd make a motion that we include it in the warrant.
So, I think that we should include it in the warrant, and any other discussion, we don't need to have it this evening unless you wanna.
Someone gonna second the motion? Motion hasn't been seconded.
No, I'll second it, it should be on the warrant.
Okay, my discussion?
Yep.
Discussion's the same as last week. The, we're hitting these people with a 4 percent to 14.45 percent, which I think is completely irresponsible, and I think that we should be looking at, now that we're gonna have increased revenue by the bed and breakfast going on this program, that we should consider reducing the amount that the town of Harwich has rather than increasing the amount. But going from 4 percent, which was our local option, to 6 percent, with the additional 5.7 percent from the state, and the additional 2.75 percent is a lot to ask of these small businesses. We don't have Marriott's in Harwich, we have small businesses.
I agree.
I think it's far too much to ask of these people, and we should, I think we should consider dialing back the local option to help accommodate and keep these people in business.
But to be clear, we're not seeking, and just for the public, we're not seeking the additional 3 percent and 3 percent that we could seek, the housing monies, we're only doing four, currently, four, and 2.75, which is the sewer tax involved.
Correct. And the state law has already been passed, so the only difference here is, 4 percent's going in for the bed and breakfast, not even the bed and breakfast, for the short-term rentals, that's a given, so instead of having it be 4 percent, it would be 6 percent.
Plus the tip.
The option is, you know, I didn't want to present this 'cause the budget message or the budget instruction from the selectman was no general override, but $350,000 is needed to balance this budget, so without a vote of this nature, then contingency plans would have to be put together to reduce the budget, and I'm not gonna engage in scare tactics, I mean, we're not gonna shut down tomorrow, but it may feel some pain to cut that 350.
Uh, Don?
My only comment on this is, I see what both sides are, but it depends on where you're sitting about who you think is the agreed party here. I tend to agree with Michael. There's a whole body of thought that we're imposing this tax out of people who show up in late June and go away in September, and it's their fault for using the facilities, but the flip side of that, it's also true, they can choose to go wherever they want to, and it really is actually more taxation on the local businesses that are there. There's gonna be a whole bunch of other taxes that are lathered onto that that we haven't considered yet. We don't have an option on the wastewater part.
Right, we have no option.
It's imposed.
Right.
The state's increasing its take because that's imposed, so the only two areas of discretion we have are this and the affordable housing component.
Right. So that's what I'm saying, for clarification, it will be four plus a 2.75 is a given, and I agree. I'm saying, in terms of looking at it, to put it on the warrant, do we put it on in terms of everything else we're talking about that should go on to the public and to make that decision? I also think, you know, it isn't just a tax on people coming here, in a sense, I mean, you know, the companies are having to allocate pieces of their business to be able to collect these taxes. If you're doing, if you're in the rental business, you're collecting these taxes, you've gotta have a mechanism in place that you're collecting these taxes, and that causes more pain for those businesses.
Just, Madam Chair, you know, the decision that I had to make as the administrator was, do you do, recommend a general override to kind of address some of the issues that have emerged, which has an impact on everyone in the community, or do you have, you know, this item, which the four to six, we could collect in FY '20, the 4 percent's going in as of January, July 1st anyway.
Right.
And I think if you want to adjust it, there's a year, I can't remember if it's a year or three years, I think it's a year, before you have the opportunity to adjust it, and then if you do adjust, you potentially run into some challenges with the 2.75, if you're in or out totally, you can probably adjust it down, but the 2.75 is a stand, you know, is in there. So this is, you know, a legally-accepted statute that's, you know, coming, all what this does is just makes the opportunity to charge people who are visiting the community who put pressure on the infrastructure of the community versus doing something that would be taxpayer-wide.
Yeah. Ed, did you?
Yeah, well, you know, this matter of going from four to 6 percent came up several years ago, 2008.
2010, a lot of it.
2010, and it came up, there were two, two local options that the state made available for the town to adopt. One was raising the meals tax by an additional three-quarters of a cent, which we voted to do and presented that at town meeting, and they voted to do that, too. In the discussions with the chamber and the hospitality, the hotel-motel operators, the conclusion that was reached was that, at the time, there was no rooms tax on rental of the short-term rental industry, and to raise, at that time, the local option from 4 percent to 6 percent would have just increased the inequity between traditional hotel motels and the short-term rental industry, and we agreed at that time, by consensus, the board agreed that we wouldn't consider doing that until such time as the tax had been extended to cover the short-term rentals, and this is the point where that has happened, and between the instituting the local option on the short-term rentals and the 2.75 percent on the, for the sewer tax, and if so voted, an additional 2 percent on the local option, this would, in essence, provide, I think, the largest property relief, property taxpayer relief package that we could present to the taxpayers in Harwich. The 2.75 percent wastewater tax will essentially relieve a lot of the property tax increase on the wastewater bonds that we'll be selling, and if we vote to place the funds from the additional local option rooms tax and short-term rental tax into a capital stabilization fund to sequester it from falling into the general fund, it will keep for quite some time our necessity to continually go to the taxpayers for debt exclusions on a number of the smaller items that we've been doing, and I think it's inappropriate and a proper thing to do.
Thank you, Ed. Michael?
You know, one important number you left out, Ed, is the 5.7 percent that they're gonna be taxed from the state, so that's an important one to note. Second, relief from the 2.7 water tax is a guess at best at this point. There's no mechanism in there saying the town of Harwich is gonna get what it puts in, no, nothing there at all. As far as the 4 percent to 6 percent goes, and Chris using that $350,000 to balance his budget, you know, I've said it before, and you bring up capital items, you know, maybe it's time we say no to a few things and stop assuming, right now, we're assuming that we're gonna get the $350,000 and putting that into a budget that we haven't even seen yet, by the way. We have not seen until today, I got the final line item budget today, so, and the budget hearings are tomorrow, but again, we haven't gone through the budget, we haven't said no to anything yet, and Saturday, sorry, and the.
I hope we're not here that long.
There's also an email today that we got from the Chamber of Commerce that talked about this, Chamber of Commerce hack, and a few other organizations talking about this going into an infrastructure fund, not in the town of Harwich, we're talking about using it to balance our budget. And again, before we've said no to anything, and I think it's time, and I've said it before, we start living within our means.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, to the town administrator, all the people that have the individual homes that are renting out either a room or their whole house, the bed and breakfast people and motel people, they paying taxes right now?
The short-term rentals.
Are they paying our taxes right now, property taxes?
Yes. Ed?
And when we get to the point where there's a debt exclusion or an override, like for the $24 million for the Chatham sewer hookup, are they paying for that through their property taxes?
Anyone that has property taxes, they are, yes.
So, we're giving relief to the general operating budget, we're not giving them relief in this scenario. We gotta move around more here, we're losing our light. My point is, is that there's other taxes that are gonna be lathered onto it. What are we gonna do, jumping jacks to keep the lights on? But you're balancing, and I've not seen this before, you're balancing the general operating budget on funds that have yet to be collected or yet to be accepted. What happens if we roll into town meeting? I don't think that that's reasonable as caretakers for the town, for us to vote for the 2 percent increase of the rooms tax, get it to town meeting, only to find that it may get turned down at town meeting, then we don't have a balanced budget anymore. I mean, I can't see, with the amount of time that we've got left supporting this right now, because we could bring it back next year to accept it if we wanted to.
Well, Madam Chair, my suggestion would be, certainly administration can put together a reductions list of $350,000. I think that if town meeting is the legislative body, it would seem to me that the legislative body should have the choice, given to them, to decide, do we want to have people that are short-term renters coming into our community, pick up some of the burden for operating of the town? Hotel-motel, right now, all goes into the general fund and helps to offset our operations, so all that is going in, and then we will have a contingency that if that doesn't get voted, we're not gonna reconvene town meeting, we'll have a cut list of items that would have to be cut out of the operating budget if it doesn't go, but to not even give town meeting that option, you know, to me seems, you know, a little bit unfair to not give the legislative body that opportunity to make that decision.
Right, so actually, that's what I was saying initially, was to put it on the warrant. I mean, I understand this different.
The state didn't give us that option with the other level.
Well, the other thing to know is, at the state level and at the local level, right now, I know this firsthand, the state isn't prepared currently. If you call the state about, how do you go about registering a rental if you have it? They don't know. They don't have anything, and not in our town, but I know in another town, Colin, the Board of Health, said, we're not doing anything yet, we have no instructions. So it's very difficult to be trying to figure out what we're gonna get when the regulation of how people are gonna go about registering their properties as they're supposed to do under this new law, really, we're not gonna know, to Don's point, we're probably not gonna know a lot more about this until next year. At the same time, if we're talking about what we put in front of the taxpayers, I don't disagree that, you know, the taxpayers have the right to vote on it. Ed, you had another comment earlier, wanted to?
Not particularly.
All right. Michael, did you have something else?
I go back to, I think we're voting this prematurely because Chris is assuming that we're gonna pass his budget, and he's assuming the Finance Committee's gonna pass his budget, and I think that we should be looking to make reductions everywhere we can rather than add $350,000 in money that we don't technically have yet. Whether it's fair to bring before the voters or not, we haven't voted the budget yet, and I know in that budget, Chris has $175,000 to go towards the school budget, which the school, if they're that over-budget, will be the ones going for the override, not us. I mean, it's all our money, but the school would be the one going before the override.
So do we want to bring this back?
Right now, it doesn't look like you're gonna get anything but a tie.
Right, so we'll just, we'll hold this, bring it back.
Yeah, we could draft two warrants, one with it and one without it.
Yeah.
I mean, I would say, you know, even if it's on, the selectmen get to vote in terms of whether you recommend a town meeting to do it or not, and FinCom, obviously, is the body of town meeting will weigh in. All what I'm saying is, you deny any opportunity by not having it on.
But to put it on the, yeah, no, I understand what you're saying, is to put it on the warrant. I mean, in terms of what you're saying about the budget, understood and agreed, but in terms of it going in front of the taxpayer to that point.
Well, we don't have to opt in to this, we have to opt out of it, so, I mean, again, my proposal would be to reduce it to 3 percent or whatever. So, I mean, again, my proposal would be to reduce it to three percent or whatever, not to, not to increase it, but this goes into effect no matter what. We're not opting in.
No.
It automatically goes into effect.
The two you have to accept.
You can't...
The two and a qu, the two and three quarter and the four percent is already automatic.
You can't opt out.
It's already automatic as of July one of nineteen.
We can't opt out.
The only thing you have, I think after a year, there's an opportu, opportunity to, to opt out, and there's consequences to opting out.
Of the two point seven five.
Right, the two point seven five only.
Right, the four is the four.
The four is the four.
Right.
So, the only difference here is whether it's four or six.
Or six, and that's my point, is either you...
We would opt into that though, to the extra two.
To increase from four to six, correct.
Right, that, right, and so do we, so, we can bring it back. Ed?
Just to be clear, the, the hotel rooms tax and, and what the legislature did is they voted to extend the, the hotel rooms tax to include short-term rentals. And, and so, the rates that had been, being collected in a town on their hotel become the rates that get extended to... The addition of the two point seven five percent goes into effect, and you can't vote to opt out for a year. So, the first year...
Just turn it on.
How do I do this?
Just turn it on now. Yeah.
The, you, so you're in it for the first year, you can opt out the second year. If you opt out the second year, and at a later time want to opt back in, you can, but when, when you do opt back in, you, you're not allowed to receive any funding from the trust for the subsequent three years. And then, as to the rooms tax, the local option rooms tax, right now, when the rooms tax was initially established, you had the option of enacting a local option, four percent or not. Almost every town in the state did, within our area, the exception of Aquina, voted not to. I think they have twelve hotel rooms, but in any event. And then, in two thousand and ten, you were allowed to adopt, add an additional two percent on the local option, and five or six towns on the Cape did, Barnstable Yarmouth, Brewster, Provincetown, Eastham, I forget who else, went up to six percent. Harwich, as I said, stayed at four percent as an equity issue with the existing hotel operators. And so, at this point, though, that is all local option, and you can vote to increase it an additional two percent. You can vote to keep it at the existing four percent, or you can vote to deal away with the four percent and, and only approve a two percent or a zero. It's, so, you know, your options are zero, two, four, or six percent. Because they, when they voted it, they voted it at, initially at a four percent option, and then they added an additional two percent option. If you want to drop back to two percent, you'd have to vacate the approval for the four percent and then adopt the two percent. I mean, it's...
Yeah, it's, right.
I think that signaled the beginning of the lightning round.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's, that was actually the, the member, Senator Markey's staff I've been trying to get in touch with for you.
Pick that up. The, the only thing I'm going to bring up, because I don't think it's really fulfilling to have a discussion about something we know we're going to move on with, but to Michael's point, the constellation of people who get to charge, who have to charge the four percent has become bigger. We have added more people that now have to collect that tax. So, even if we did nothing, we're getting more in receipts this coming year.
Well, it won't...
Adding the two percent is putting new people into this pool to charge people taxes and adding a two percent on top of that premium.
It's just, DOR has informed us that we cannot take into account any of the new revenue from the, the short-term rental tax until twenty-one.
Normally, DOR, in municipal finance, this is the quickest way I can explain it to anybody out there in TV land, you could have a bag of money sitting right here, right now, and we would not be allowed to spend it until next fiscal year when DOR recognizes that it exists. I don't get how, they won't recognize the, the new people coming in, but they're willing to project what two percent more would be, because that makes absolutely no sense under municipal finance law.
Well, we've already been collecting that since nineteen eighty-eight.
You haven't been collecting the two percent.
No, the four percent, so no one...
So, they're extrapolating, they still haven't collected it.
No, I mean, they do often do that in terms of when they're trying to figure out what overall the tax rate is going to be. Ed, did you...
Yeah, I mean, that, that was the point. We have, what, twenty, twenty-odd years' history of collecting the four percent and, and have, if you, from DOR's point of view, if you add an additional two percent, it be, just becomes a matter of doing the math to calculate.
I get that, but if we changed our fees for departments, they wouldn't allow us to do the same kind of extrapolation.
Michael?
And we don't have twenty-odd years of charging fourteen point four, five percent to small businesses. We don't, we can't guess right now what impact this is going to make on these small businesses and whether or not people are going to come. I've been to several of those meetings, and the, the people that are paying this tax now are not for this tax and do believe they're going to lose business.
When's Larry coming back?
Yeah, I think we probably want to wait for a full board, because if it's two to two, then...
Right. And again, my, my comment is to put it on the warrant. I'm not saying I support it, but in terms of allowing the public to make the decision, it's, to me, I have my own thoughts on it, but...
You'll have the opportunity to inform town meeting either way.
Well, that's, right, so...
Unless it's not on.
But we can bring it back when Larry's here as well, so...
When is that?
Actually, I think he's out of town for the next meeting.
We have to publish a warrant.
Yeah, that's right, you're right, so, he won't be, I don't think he's back on Monday. I thought, he said he was out for two meetings.
When does the warrant have to be published, published?
Well, under the, and we have it in the material.
Yeah.
We, we have an obligation to get it to the Finance Committee so they can begin their deliberations. And the date that we have, no new information or changes will be added to the warrant after this date. So, you guys voted March fourth as your drop dead date per the calendar.
Which is Monday.
Per your guys' calendar.
But technically, Chris, if you guys wanted to wait for Larry to come back, we could vote to change that date to the following meeting.
To March eleventh.
I mean, you know, how, how much do you want to short the time that FinCom has to review?
We're only talking about one article, we're not talking about the whole thing. Talking about one article.
Yeah, no, no, I'm with you, I'm with you.
I just, thank you, Madam Chair. Based on that, the Finance Committee is meeting Thursday, and we're going to start the warrant, and we took the articles that you have on hold right now and put them all on hold, we're not going to discuss those, so we're going to start Thursday, no matter what you do with the rest of this. And we're not discussing any of the ones on Thursday that you have already on hold now, so that part doesn't matter to us. We're not going to have time between now and the fourth or the eleventh to get it all done, but just that...
Thank you, Don.
Yeah, just another warning date here. In addition to everything else, the Charter calls for the first Tuesday of March to have the final budget voted by the Board of Selectmen to send over to FinCom. That's not this administrator's budget, that's the Board of Selectmen's budget. So, that has to be on the agenda next week, or else they have nothing to be able to receive.
Yeah, and, but FinCom submits their written recommendation on the budget warrant by no later than March twenty-fifth.
I know, but we, this isn't our date, we didn't choose it. It's the first Tuesday, and it's in nine point nine, nine point two point two, where it requires us on the first Tuesday of March to deliver them a budget.
But information, we so far have the same information that you have, so, we're going to start.
Nine, three, two.
Okay.
Okay.
We're going to start either way.
Tom Sherry. Our nine, three, two, honor before the fourth Tuesday of February, so that means tomorrow.
We, we send to them...
Require to submit final budget to Finance Committee.
What, what date?
Nine, three, two.
Nine, three, two, honor before the fourth Tuesday of February.
Talking about the Charter.
Yeah, right here.
Charter reference, nine, three, two, okay.
Which is tomorrow.
I mean, we're not going to make any headway tonight on this article, so...
We can't.
You know?
Well, we can't on the budget, because it's not on the agenda.
Right, so, I, I, there's no action we can take on this at this point.
It's in the calendar.
All right, so, well, we're going to have to hold it. And review it Monday.
Well...
Go ahead, Ed.
The actual wording in, in the Charter, action on the proposed budget is nine, three, one, the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee shall meet jointly or separately in budget hearings that are considered necessary to adequately review the proposed budget of the Town Administrator. Nine, three, two, honor before the fourth Tuesday of February of each year, the Board of Selectmen shall, let's submit to the Finance Committee, a budget which has been approved with or without amendments to the Town Administrator's pos, proposed budget. So, technically, by tomorrow, we are supposed to present an approved budget.
But we did the same thing last year where we had our budget meetings in March, so, you know, there's one thing, Charter's saying one thing, and the calendar is not what's been going on in the last couple of years that I've been on the board, so...
Just in, in fairness, I mean, the administrator's budget presents a balanced budget plan that goes to FinCom. If there's amendments made between now and town meeting, then there's amendments made between now and town meeting. So, FinCom did receive the balanced budget of the administrator, and it can be changed. I know, I'm just...
I mean, I think that we can all agree that what is cited in the Charter is not exactly the process that has been in action, so... Back to the, the warrant article that we're talking about, I, I mean, we can't really ta, take any action on it tonight, we'll have to bring it back on Monday. And I'm not sure if Larry's back.
We'll prepare two versions of the warrant.
Right.
I need to vent.
Oh, geez, go ahead, Don.
Ed is correct, and Tom is correct. And we have on our internet site as the official code of the Town of Harwich, an old version of this. I mean, what do you expect the citizens in the town to do? Fudge around the town clerk's office every time they need to look up something? This needs to be correct. That's the whole point of having a website. Mine says two thousand and nine, his says two thousand and thirteen.
I'm not looking at mine.
Yeah, but Ed's right, and, and I'm angry again, this is the second time in a year that I've relied on something that was on our website that's fundamental to the town, and it's a misstatement. And I'm not expecting Jamie to say anything, because it is not her responsibility, she only places it there. It is our responsibility, it's the clerk's responsibility, and it's administration's responsibility that we give her accurate information to post on our site.
Well, what site is Ed looking at versus what site are you looking at?
He's got a dropdown of this.
Jamie?
It's a secondary website called Code E three sixty that the town clerk maintains that information with that website, so it doesn't actually have anything to do with our, our website.
Our website has the link in it.
Right, to provide, the Code three sixty is supposed to be providing that service, so...
That's where you would research the regulations, so...
But it's the Town of Harwich that's responsible for the information that's on its own site.
Michael?
Madam Chair, may I suggest we move on, because it's not going to matter anyway.
Thank you. No, it doesn't matter, so we'll...
We're not going to, we're not going to vote, the budget's not on the agenda right now.
So, we're going to, I, yeah, I tried to say that a couple of minutes ago, but it didn't work.
The next item, Madam Chair, is the reconstruction of Lower County Road. This was also held over, Mr. Hooper is here tonight. The same kind of discussion, I guess, that in the plan, we do have, Lower County Road is one of two borrowing articles that we have in there as a debt exclusion, and it would be my recommendation to place it on the warrant, and then, again, town meeting needs to decide if it wants to have the increased taxes. I did include, under the Town Administrator's report, the material that Mr. Hooper had put in, in terms of this, he anticipates that the bids will come in, if the bids are lower, we do have in the plan, based upon suggestions made, to use one million dollars from our roadway program to decrease. So, if it, originally it was budgeted at five point five, if it were to come in at, let's just say, four point five, less the million dollars from the, the roadway program, now you would have that down to three point five, would actually be in part of the debt exclusion. So, the, the motion can be included to say that, that it would be, a debt exclusion doesn't have a specific number in it, it would be the number voted at town meeting. So, if the bids do come in lower, we can capture that lower cost and the impact to the, to the residents of the community.
Does anyone have any comments, any further discussion? Michael?
Same comments as last week, my objection remains the same. We told the taxpayers last year that we were going to take it easy after passing thirty million dollars at town meeting last year, and I object to it for that reason.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Unlike the previous discussion, where we didn't know how much money we were actually going to generate off of it, and it hasn't actually been adopted yet, we know we got a bad road, we know what the money is going to be relating to that, and while I probably will not vote to support the article when it gets to a position point, I, I think it should be on the warrant ultimately, so that, because this is as ripe as something's going to get. We got, we got a price, we've got a road that needs something, I think we could wait a year, but that's up to the taxpayers to decide, and it's, he already waited one year, and I think it's only fair to let the townspeople have, have a shot at this.
Ed?
Yeah, I, you know, I've looked at the road, it's in, it's in bad shape, I've looked at the sidewalks, they're, they're hazardous to women with strollers, they're hazardous to people on carts, in wheelchairs, we know that, we know that from a study that was done. We, you know, we are openly liable for, for that at this point, and I don't, you know, in terms of keeping costs down for taxpayers, I don't see where waiting a year or two years to do this is going to make it any cheaper.
Want to move to conclude?
So, I'm going to move that we, that it be kept in the capital plan and kept in the warrant as an article.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I, I mean, I agree in the sense that, you know, we did indicate that we would try to, you know, watch our spending very carefully, but at the same time, I, I feel the same way that it should go in front of the taxpayers, I, I don't know that I'll support it, but...
And, and just to comment to, you know, to that, the point that Mike brings up, I can understand his position, given what the position he took last year. I was not a member of the board at that year, so that was not my particular position.
Right. Okay, so, moved and seconded, no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Three to one.
Three to one.
The next item is a new article, number thirty-four, not new article, just a new numbering. Article thirty-four is the solar photic energy system. Last time, we did not have a list of the town-owned properties, we have included the list of town-owned properties. This was part of the solar RFP that was distributed, and just for the general public that may not have looked at it, the Azov Wright site on Queen Anne Road, which is basically adjacent to the existing solar field, Cranberry Valley Golf Course, the... And just for the, uh, general public that may not have looked at it, uh, the As of Right site on Queen Anne Road, which is basically adjacent to the, uh, existing solar field, Cranberry Valley Golf Course, uh, the grounds, uh, behind the cart barn and the cart barn. Uh, the DPW maintenance building on Queen Anne Road that would be on the building itself, the community center on Oak Street, the parking canopies, uh, so create a, a solar parking above the, uh, the parking lot itself to try to capture some of the, the solar. And then the, the, uh, fifth location is the public safety building, uh, next to the existing ground-mounted. Uh, so those are the ones that were part of a, uh, RFP that was put together by, uh, the town, working as part of our green energies initiative with the, uh, C-Vac folks, and people did come out, look at those sites. Uh, we did submit, um, a year or two ago, several sites, and none of the sites were selected, so we don't know whether the sites will be selected. But this would give authority to do a longer-term lease, uh, that would be needed to, uh, enter into these solar agreements.
Thank you, Chris, is any further discussion on this article?
Just an explanation on the community center on Oak Street, the parking canopies, there's nothing there now, right?
No, it, what it is, is, um, the closest one that I could think of is, uh, Four Seas. If you go and park in their parking field, they have kind of a, a solar cover, if you would, that absorbs the sun, so it acts as a shade barrier for people that park cars, but it gives an opportunity to kind of collect some of the solar energy.
So part of that process would be applying for a permit in public hearings, whatnot, so the public can decide if they wanna park in the can.
Correct.
Okay, so no other discussion?
I move to include it in the warrant, second.
Okay, no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, okay.
Unanimous.
Unanimous, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the next item is amendment to the agreement between the town of Chatham and Harwich for the formation of the regional school district. Uh, you actually just earlier voted that, uh, those changes, uh, this would just allow for those changes to be effectuated by town meeting.
Thank you, uh, Michael?
I moved it, we approved the amendment to the agreement between the towns of Harwich and Chatham for formation of a regional school district in the warrant.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, okay, unanimous.
Next item is the, uh, proposed amendments to Harwich Home Rule Charter, the capital outlay plan. This one, it was, uh, some, a submission made by the, uh, the, the charter folks, uh, charter and bylaw. I, I may defer to, Don may have some, um, concerns in regards to this.
Okay, Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, one concern I've got is, I've got the word placeholder sitting in here, but you've got the text, so, there is text.
There is text.
I, I just want everyone to know there's text.
So what number was this?
This is, uh, thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Should've received the new warrant on Friday.
Did not.
In the pack, it's in the packet.
It's in the packet, yeah.
I don't have a hard copy of it for tonight, but, all right, so, in terms of the water, wastewater, it was something that was written here, uh, and John Giorgio and I spoke, uh, I wanna say last Friday, on all three articles. He had some recommendations that he wanted to make, uh, minor ones, but editorial comments that we need to see. But this one is one that we need to have because it's a jurisdictional thing, if we don't change the jurisdiction to include the water commissioners as being water wastewater commissioners, then it's gonna be one more year again before we turn over anything.
Thought we voted that out.
Yeah, that was already voted by the board.
Yeah, this is a capital outlay.
This is, yeah, it's capital.
Two from the.
Thirty-seven.
Charter and bylaw.
Well, thirty-seven is also, is the water wastewater.
Yeah, you gotta look at the update.
Okay, as for thirty-eight, which is, uh, the capital outlay, I spoke with Sandy after, Sandy Hall, she, she isn't here tonight because she had a conflict and nobody thought to invite her, uh, on the charter articles. So, uh, gi- given that, I can only say secondhand what's going on here. That was something, uh, that the Chair of the Finance Committee had talked about, but we haven't gotten a vote of the Finance Committee, and it may be premature, unless they want us, uh, to say that it should stay in. I mean, it was just language that she was putting out there to respond to our concerns that the, uh, capital proj- program had changed to a capital budget rather than a capital plan, which it had been in previous years.
Dan?
Thank you, um, in, in some of the discussion you had last week about getting these things in final form, I think this one is pretty close, I don't know. But there's also another one after this one about ex officio members, um, I think there's a change that I'm gonna recommend to the Finance Committee that we make on that one to exclude the Finance Committee, but I think that can come with a motion. However, with the earlier discussion that you had about, um, changing things and with the, uh, petition article to change select board to select man, uh, select man to select board and all that kind of stuff, maybe this is a year to, to have a fall town meeting where we do a lot of charter stuff on the charter and just do all these kind of things. And still have them in time for the ballot next May, uh, so we could do, I mean, just a suggestion, but, um, I, I do know that, um, the Finance Committee in one of its workshops earlier this year wanted to, um, host a summit with you, the Charter and Bylaw Review Committee, Capital Outlay Committee, and us fixing the charter language to make sure that it's correct. If you're gonna fix that, you might as well fix the dates that you were discussing a little while ago, um, all those things, I just think there's a lot there we could be doing, but if you wanna knock these two off, then they're there.
Thank you, Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair, actually, I not only agree with what Dana just said, but there may be a bigger reason to do that because it's, it's starting to look really unlikely that we're gonna have firm legislation for the DHY ready for the May, but it would be ready for the town.
Conceivably for the fall.
For the fall, which would be an even bigger reason to have, in which case, it all belongs. I feel uncomfortable amending the charter if we're not all comfortable with the language.
Thank you, Don, Ed?
Well, I, when was, for Article thirty-seven and thirty-eight, when did the actual language appear?
It was submitted within the time we've, it was submitted by the date that we had.
And that's our article.
And it's, it, well, it was from the, the committee, the Charter and Bylaw Committee.
They wrote it on our instruction for the wastewater.
The wastewater, I, it's already, to my mind, that's already been done.
Yeah, but he's asking that.
No, no, no.
No, Article thirty-seven is.
Thirty-seven and thirty-eight.
Capital outlay and thirty-eight.
Capital outlay and the.
Is ex officio member.
Those were submitted, but they were submitted in a, they were submitted as a memo form.
No, those are thirty-seven, thirty-eight.
Yeah, we're, we're, you.
And we needed to convert it into an article form.
The one article still in.
The, the charter amendment changed from water commission to wastewater commission, we voted that.
So these two articles were submitted.
They were submitted, they were submitted, yes, they were submitted as a memo, so they, most of the time, people submitted it as an article, and we had the article language, so we asked John Giorgio to just make sure that they were in article language as opposed to memo language. The two concerns that, that he raised, and I, I did put that in the, in the packet, that they, well, there's three things they're doing. One is, right now, capital outlay is at fifty thousand, they're talking about recommending that to a hundred thousand.
But this is pointless, why don't we just agree that it isn't ready yet?
Well.
Yeah.
That's fine, I'm fine with that, are you fine with that?
Not really.
No?
I think it's really close to ready, and I think that this, I disagree with Ed, this is our warrant, I think we can tweak it right up until it goes to print. It's our warrant, they have to submit the final articles in final form to us, but there's nothing in there that I can read anywhere that says we can't make a spelling change if we have to. This capital outlay one seems like a, I wanna say no-brainer to me, um, all the language is in there, right now, it's been argued that it's a capital budget, not a capital plan. Everything in here says that, other than the fact that I probably would keep it at fifty thousand, says to make it a capital plan, not a capital budget. So, other than maybe a few pieces that need to be tweaked, I don't, I don't see a problem with it, and I don't know why we, why we wouldn't vote.
Well, I guess my question goes back to whether or not we would, to the suggestion of dealing with these in the fall, if we were gonna do that, wouldn't we look at them all in the fall?
Well.
I think we have them in, in a form, the only thing I was trying to highlight was just what, what the recommended changes are, so people are aware, so one, one of the changes to go from fifty to a hundred. The second change that they have in here is that they had alluded to in the original language, it was five years versus a seven-year capital plan, so do you wanna have it five or do you wanna have it seven? And then the third, which it was a little bit unusual, is they do have a provision in here that, um, it can be changed, I'm trying to find it.
The plan.
The plan can be changed, well, by the two-thirds vote, but it also has that it would be changed, the administrator and the selectman put it together, but then if the Finance Committee, uh, does not go along, then it would not be adopted. And that's a little unusual to have the Finance Committee that generally provides recommendations to town meeting, to have basically a veto authority over a section of the capital plan. And those are the points that Attorney Giorgio kind of just highlighted.
Okay, Don?
Yeah, i- if we're gonna get into a discussion of it, then I, I'll go further, is it, uh, when John and I were having this conversation about this, he was having a misunderstanding about how this all worked, he goes, well, don't you get an opportunity to just vote it again the next year? And I said, no, under the plan, you're only voting on the one year that's being added on, and if you wanna resequence the plan, it would take a two-thirds vote, and that's where he came, you know, came up with the other language. Whether we do or don't wanna use the Finance Committee as a backstop, uh, for them to ultimately agree or it can't be done, I can't, um, it's just me, I don't know.
Right.
But I mean, ultimately, the idea of being able to reconfigure it with a two-thirds vote is not a new idea, it's the original idea.
Okay, well, Michael?
I mean, if we think we have to add anything to it, we still have next week to vote, and I'd say that we can bring this one back next week to vote, if, if Chris thinks we need to add more to it, or if you guys wanna have a further discussion.
Well, I think it, it's a judgment call about five versus seven, that, that's a policy question of the selectman. And then the only thing I'm pointing out is that the, the Finance Committee, having a veto authority over things going on or off, is just unusual, that, that's a little unusual. They can certainly vote to recommend or agree or not.
Right, we didn't ask for that, we would probably end up on any capital plan making a motion that would have the following changes if we were gonna make any changes.
Thank you, Dana, Michael?
Yeah, I'd be comfortable striking that, I, I don't think they should, you know, power over it, and I'm fine with the seven years, I think we should be planning instead of adding things.
Making a motion to that effect?
Ed?
There's a couple, i- is this in nine point nine dash six dash seven, what you're talk, I'm not sure where you're talking about.
Chris, where's the veto power, which one, nine six what?
It's under.
That's what I'm looking for.
I saw it earlier.
But to be clear, Sandy's position was, she, they wrote text upon our request, they didn't just say, we're gonna change the charter, uh, so she viewed this as our article, and the next one also as our article because we.
Nine, nine six three reads, "The town administrator and the capital outlay committee shall submit a seven-year capital plan to a joint public hearing of the Board of Selectmen and Finance," no, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one.
I think it's nine point six seven.
Nine point six seven.
Require approval of the capital outlay committee, the Board of Selectmen, and the Finance Committee, and all such proposed amendments shall require a two-thirds majority vote.
Yes. That's, that's the one, six seven.
Well, I had, I have a, a lot of problems with this whole section. First off, it starts with the exception of petition articles, any article included in the annual or special town meeting which requests a capital outlay, blah, 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 shall require, it requires approval. It accepts petition articles, whereas elsewhere in the charter, if somebody brings forth a petition article for a special town meeting, um, and it has any financial impact, it has to be accepted by both the, the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee to be included in the warrant.
But that's not when we do the capital plan.
I know, but capital, if somebody's bringing forth a petition article that's, uh, a capital issue, that's a, that's a financial issue. And would require it to be accepted by the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen.
On just the special.
Yeah.
Hey, Chris.
So that needs to be straightened out, um, uh, how you, which way you wanna go on that, and then it's a, then it goes, shall require the approval of the capital outlay committee, the Board of Selectmen, and the Finance Committee.
That's the part.
Now, whether, whether you want them to have all be approving of it, but this is, it, this is on any article included in the annual or special town meeting warrant. Okay, so, if we have in the, it's the capital outlay plan, uh-huh, uh, two million dollars for a harbor improvement, and it, and it gets approved in the capital outlay plan, and there's an article, then the article, it's saying, would have to be approved by the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the Capital Outlay Committee. But then it goes on, and all such proposed amendments, well, where's the amendment? If the article mirrors what's approved in the capital plan, it's not an amendment, but it seems to require a two-thirds majority vote.
So.
For, for articles.
Might I suggest we wait until next Monday and have her explain, invite her in, have her explain?
Yeah, well, and also, you know, the discussion on whether or not we should be looking at, you know, a, a more focused review of the charter, so that it's consolidated and coordinated. So, to that point, if you're saying one thing and changing one piece, you're affecting another piece of the charter.
See, I don't agree with that, though, that's why Monday would be a good time.
Well, we can bring it back Monday, but I'm saying we should have that discussion again, because it may be that we think it's worthwhile.
Because what you're really doing in all of this is re-establishing either a five or a seven-year plan, and you're requiring a vote, it's not about an article, it's where you're requiring a vote to reconfigure the plan so that year five becomes year two.
Right.
We have gotten away from that, every year is a new year, in our current, that's why it's capital budget, because every year's a new year, I don't care, you could put twenty years in it, but since it goes up to town meeting, each year is a discrete new plan, you're not changing everything, you're just voting on the whole thing. This is a sequence, which is a capital plan, where we go one, two, three, four, five, and things are tethered to a year, and in order for you to change that year, you probably do want all of the town fathers and mothers, uh, to be able to agree to that change, because it's already in the plan. If you're gonna try to change it, you need a two-thirds vote to either insert something new sideways or to change the years, which we don't currently have to do right now.
Michael?
Just, uh, Chris, if we could strike that veto power and be one step closer to an actual vote for this when Sandy comes next week, and maybe we can talk about it. As far as an additional town meeting goes, certainly if we have a DHY, something important, uh, like that, it would make sense, but just to do charter amendments, that's an awful big cost to the taxpayers, to have a charter amendment at town meeting. So I, I don't, I, I wouldn't support that unless there was something more on there, and these two seem pretty cut and dry to me.
Well, the next one sure is.
Okay, so we'll, we'll bring this back on Monday, uh, when Sandy's in.
With the re, with the proviso that we take out the finance, shall with the finance.
With the side, yeah.
I'll take a stab at making those revisions, certainly.
I'll talk.
Okay. So now.
Ex officios.
Yeah, Ed?
Well, you know, the, the problem I have, you know, with the, the level at, at which we're, we're amending this article is, um, our, our rules in, in our bylaw that lays out how we accept articles, basically, uh, all articles to be delivered to the Board of Selectmen's office, um, by the second Friday in February in final form.
But John Giorgio had an opinion on this, and he doesn't agree with you.
I know, and that's his opinion, but I've looked at it, and I've read back and forth, and I can't find anywhere in either our charter or, um, bylaw that, that challenges the phrase, "all articles." There is no, "all articles except," there's no indication anywhere that there is an exception made.
But when it's saying, "all articles in final form."
Yes.
To be reviewed.
To us, not from us.
To us, right, right, I mean, that's how I read that, but, Michael?
Yeah, I think we can, if we could, can we move on from this, too, I think we've got legal opinion on this, and Ed just said it, delivered to the Board of Selectmen in final form, doesn't mean the Board of Selectmen can't change things in an open meeting, and that's what John Giorgio said, so, we have a legal opinion, and I think we move on from this.
So.
So the next one is the ex officio, uh, same thing that we received this from the. So the next one is the ex officio, same thing that we received this from the charter bylaw review. And I defer to Don for the-
I, I would agree with Dana's position there, that you exclude the finance committee from that. Our biggest problem was something that was never contemplated in the charter. The only time ex officio was ever mentioned was for the town moderator in a town meeting that created ex officio position that way. We have had a burgeoning amount of committees that get members fed to them by virtue of them being on other committees, and we've been fumbling with this for two years now. There are people who leave those committees, which means that they're no longer eligible to be on the committee that they were ex officio on because they've lost the underpinning for that. We gotta fix this. I mean, at some point or another, it's a circumstance we just did not contemplate when the charter was written, you know, like the CPC people and everything. I'd feel comfortable taking FinCom out of it, but I, I just don't see, we gotta do something about this.
So, I, I mean, I guess my first question is, why wouldn't we just hold this till Sandy's here next week and have that conversation? Does anyone feel differently?
I'm fine with that, but the only thing that's a hangup is FinCom at that point.
Dana?
Yeah, in the past, we've always wanted to have the right to appoint someone that's not a member of our committee to say capital outlay committee. I know right now that the chairman of the capital outlay committee is appointed by the town administrator. If the town administrator were not to appoint him, we'd like to appoint him. He doesn't have to be a member, or she wouldn't have to be a member of our committee to do that. And this says that they do have to be a member of our committee and end up with our term and so forth.
Well, and more to the point, Dana, what it doesn't say currently in the charter, and I think that that should be rehashed on Monday, is all of these other ex officio positions are essentially like a Supreme Court justice, where somebody nominates them from their committee, and we confirm them here by vote. You and I have talked about this over the past year, and I would tend to agree with you. I'm not sure that we ever contemplated that FinCom, which is a construct of the town meeting itself, as opposed to the selectman's side. I, I'm pretty sure that it was meant that you deliver your own person to it, but that the committees that we have jurisdiction over, we have to confirm those people by vote. So that's probably gotta be made a little clearer that you folks deliver your ex officio position because you appoint them. You don't recommend them.
And we usually have a term when we appoint them.
Exactly.
We write a letter and so forth.
But that probably-
So the only decision you would have to make is if you'd ever contemplated appointing someone
Other than?
From a, that's not a member of another committee.
Right. Thank you. So we'll discuss that further.
I'll talk with her, get that fixed.
Chris?
So we'll hold that. On the Affordable Housing Trust is the next one that you guys hadn't officially voted. The board hadn't officially voted on that. Let me see if I can find the number. We did include the list of properties. I know there was one, a revised list of property.
We, we voted differently from what the original recommendation was.
Thirty, sorry, wait a minute. Forty-three.
Sixty-two.
Oh, I haven't-
Article sixty-two.
It's not just me.
All right, well, the one I'm looking at says forty-three, so I must be looking right here.
It's on page forty-six. Article sixty-two. Just on this one, we did, I'm also the chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, so we had a deliberation last Wednesday, or last Thursday, last Thursday, I think it was. And in those deliberations, there was some concern in regards to Earl Road. In the legal review of Earl Road, the town originally took that art, took that property in 1944. There's, I think, five or six times that it was brought to town meeting to change the purpose of it. And each purpose change has certain significance to it. So we decided to defer that for a year, so Earl Road was taken off pending additional legal review.
And I might add, because I, I'm the vice chair, I'm not, there was concern, at least on my part, that the public was perceiving this as something that was a fait accompli. We were just gonna grab the land, build something. The jurisdiction is a problem. There's also a problem that even if we get the land, these housing trusts can actually acquire an asset and sell it to be able to afford something else. There was never a done deal that, A, it was going to be on the properties, and B, that we were just gonna build an affordable housing complex on it immediately because putting it in play still didn't mean that we were building anything. I did point out to people there, and we need a bigger discussion for the public, that because, just because it has a stand of trees in it, doesn't make it an open space in, with a capital O. That it's sitting there, but it could just as easily be a parking lot for wrecking youth at some point in time because right now it is under jurisdiction. They have that right. It's not part of the jurisdiction of open space protections. We have a lot of open space that we've protected. We have affordable housing that we've facilitated. And in this instance, that land may be worth more in the public sector with people paying taxes on it than it would be for us to build, but it's so premature. They will, all of that in the background. We decided to take it away so that the public can have a better understanding of what's going on.
Thank you, Don.
So the, the listing is the same with the exception of the Earl Road.
Which is out.
Michael?
So I guess my question is, one, I, I haven't seen the minutes to your meeting, but what, what process did you guys take in picking these lots? And what due diligence has been done? I think the board and, the board now and then town meetings can be asked to transfer these parcels of land. Why so many? Why so fast? We're not, we don't, we only have a certain amount of money in the Affordable Housing Trust, which will only allow us to do one or two projects, maybe three projects. Why so many pieces of land being asked to be transferred now rather than some and then wait a year and do more?
No, fair question. I, I think the response to that is really twofold. And this is actually as a member of the trust and not necessarily just as the administrator. I think the idea was to kind of have a work plan to look at the properties and then do a review. So we didn't want to isolate and pick any one specific area in the community. We wanted to kind of see which ones were general municipal use throughout the, the town. In terms of the due diligence, it really was kind of simplistic at the local level here that we had the planner, myself, other people internally, look at these parcels to see if they made sense. The process, which we do have a, some letters in our material in the trust package that will then engage an outside consulting firm. But for them to be engaged, most likely Mass Housing Partnership, the, the folks at the state, they would come in and do feasibility studies. So anything that had wetlands on it that we couldn't construct, would it be avoided? And those feasibility studies would go through and identify the parcels that we want to pursue. But having jurisdictional authority over them gives us the ability to do those feasibility studies in a more direct manner. And if they come back with a feasibility study is that it's not good for housing, then the trust would, would basically repurpose those back to the town.
Michael?
That was my question. Thank you. If, if you don't use them, you give them back.
Correct.
And you're gonna want to have a, a sampling of what you can do on these various properties and what gets us the best bang for the buck, technically. Ed, did you have something? Okay. Michael?
I move that we approve Article sixty-two, Harwich Affordable Housing Trust's list of town properties to designate as affordable in the warrant.
Second.
Moved in second. And any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. The next two are related to amend the code for the departmental revolving funds. So Carol's here, the finance director. But we did ask the question, I think Selectman McManus had specifically asked, had we gone through some of the originals to see what the wording was, to make sure in the summary we captured those? And, and the answer was yes, that those original elements were looked at, and hopefully the summaries are, are more accurate.
Thank you, Chris.
But I'll, if there's any questions, I think I'll defer to Carol because she kind of invested a lot more time and energy in this than I do.
Thank you. Do any board members have any questions for Carol?
Well, so the, so what we have in the, the chart are, are still summaries?
Yes, but they're a summary based upon a review of the original, the original language.
Would it be, especially in the area on use of funds, would, are the descriptions so long that it would be impractical to include the description as originally approved?
Yeah, so, so typically what happens in the bylaw is they get compressed. Those descriptions get compressed. Some of them were compressed so much it really changed the use of the funds or how they could be used. And that's why I went through a process of reviewing many of them just to take a look and analyze what was the original intent, what ended up in the bylaw, and how can we rectify it? So, so that was the process that I used.
Okay.
Any other questions, Michael?
Uh, give me a moment, I'm still trying to find.
Okay. Don?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just to be clear, though, this isn't the discussion that I originally wanted to have because ultimately the matrix I'm looking at is who has oversight authority, too.
It's a, a couple articles later. Just to remind folks, the, the law did change. I wish I could say it was helpful, but it really kind of makes things a little bit more complex. They require that anytime we have a fund, that we have a bylaw and we describe what that fund does, who can spend from it and what purpose it could be spent from. Then any changes we want to make to those descriptions need to be an amendment to the bylaw. And then the second one is, we're not supposed to talk about how much is appropriated in that. So each year, as we have historically done, there's a secondary description of all the articles with the mirroring language. But really on that, the main purpose is to establish the, the funding cap for how much can be. And just for folks at home, the revolving accounts, if you're, have a basketball camp through recreation that you raise a hundred dollars, that the hundred dollars goes into the fund, and then the expenses related to that program come out of that fund, the hundred dollars.
And, and that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about an approval matrix that just because it was sourced at a program and the program director wants to use that, who has oversight to say yes or no? And if that is the director, that's a whole different story because that becomes a lot more loose than the, the regular appropriations system.
So that's in the bylaw, the approval of who has authority to expend?
But not who has oversight. Do they have summary approval authority with no oversight? And everybody who's listed here just can go out and spend money regardless of what they-
It'll all come through?
No, I, I think ultimately if there's any spending on, like that example of the basketball, if there was an appropriation or someone wanted to be paid for badminton, then the, the finance review would pick that up and say, "Well, you can't spend something that's not related to the program on that."
That's not the same as a programmatic review. To expect Carol to say yes or no is not her job. It's like, "Yeah, this is a valid program that we want to expend from." I'm just worried that there's a whole bunch of fiefdoms that have grown up over the last fifteen or twenty years. They all have their own funding sources. And there is no central, like there is with the appropriation process in our regular budget. There's no central authority of review. Carol can only say, "Yeah, it's an approved use, and it's coming from that program, and it's coming to be used in that program." That's, that's the same as saying, "We want to do that."
Michael?
I see where Don's going. Chris, you know, contracts, twenty-five thousand dollars or less. Used to be fifty thousand unless you, you had to bring them to the board for signature. For, for purchases, take the cemetery because Robin's here. So the cemetery revolving funds, a hundred thousand. If Robin wants to go make a one-time purchase of a hundred thousand dollars for the cemetery, does she have to check with anyone?
Yes. In that case, anything over twenty-five thousand would have to be, well, anything that would be a contract would come through administration, so administration would see it from a contract standpoint. The accountant sees it from a, a standpoint of, is it appropriate? In terms of that hundred thousand, anything over twenty-five, then that comes back to the selectmen. If you have in there that she wanted to do a hundred requests for opening and closing a grave that was all a hundred, you know, a hundred dollars, then that would just be really limited to her as a department head.
So the oversight is triggered on the twenty-five thousand dollar contract mark? Under twenty-five thousand, there's really no oversight other than the department head?
The department head is the primary responsibility for adhering to these.
Or anything under twenty-five thousand. Roughly, yes.
Ed?
Let's say, Robin, say, Robin, let me.
Okay, so I'm-
Robin gets a contract to have a section of, oh, um.
Well, Ed, I just want to say that I don't approve anything without my commissioner signing off on it. So I don't know how all the other ones do it, but all of the, all of the expenses that I pay, we do it every month. My commissioners see all of the stuff that we are gonna be expending, and they sign off on it. If, so those are normally like hundred dollars or fifty dollars or whatever. But if it's anything that we go out to bid, we usually do a procurement form. If it's over twenty-five, then I bring it up here.
And then there would be the review, but-
Yeah, so just, i- if you look at, under the cemetery, it says, "The revolving account is cemetery. Authorization to spend: the administrator and the cemetery commission." So it's clearly there. The revenue source, ninety percent from lot sales, a hundred percent of all cemetery services and fees. So that's where the money would come from that goes into it. And then the use of the fund would be maintenance, care, and support of town cemetery properties. So everything has to be within the confines of the approvals.
Don?
You're saying that as if that's hunky-dory, but that's exactly the problem. Is commissioners are appointed officials. They're not elected officials. They're not in pro, they're not in operations either. That's my concern about this whole system, is it doesn't seem to be centralized to the point where the town administrator eventually, or the ATA, see this at all. We have, one of the only towns on the Cape where the selectmen, and I know Norm, who isn't here tonight, bit my head off the last time, we're one of the only boards of selectmen on Cape Cod that doesn't see payment warrants before they're paid out. This is loose enough where there's no threads that go through that office in the front, whether it's the selectman, the board, the town administrator. I'm not talking about whether there's sufficient funds. And I understand the twenty-five thousand dollar thing, but I don't see how we divested central authority because I've said this before, this is not a private corporation, each of these revolving funds. It's the town of Harwich. And if we decided that there was a better purpose through your office or through the board of selectmen for expenditure, it isn't just a done deal. Some appointed people, and I'm not degrading them or diminishing them, but it's the same deal with wrecking youth as a commission. We long ago had determined that we didn't want the golf committee to be in the business of running the golf courses as a wholly owned subsidiary of the town where they decided that they could spend whatever money they got in. All of this seems to be the same generically, and the way you're pitching this, yeah, that's great. I'm sure that they, they all do what they said, and Robin's right. They have a meeting, and she pitches what she's gonna do, and they vote for it. I'm questioning the overall viability of that within the context of how the town runs because we've got some pretty big funds. We've got the Harbor Fund, we've got, you know, the Golf Fund. And if we're sectoring those out so that they're kind of quasi-town, they're not really the town of Harwich. And up to twenty-five grand they could just spend and spend and spend without any oversight. I mean, we've essentially set up a bunch of like twenty or twenty-five governments within our government. I'm uncomfortable with that.
Michael?
Golf, pro shop, and restaurant lease revenue. That's a, that's a high one, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. I assume that, Chris, that's used for inventory and restaurant?
Mm-hmm.
So can we get a, these don't reset every year. Can we get balances on these? Are these, these, are they allowed to continue to grow these balances?
They were limited each year to the amounts that are on here.
That you voted for.
So if there's forty thousand left in that fund?
I think if it carries over, it carries over. Yes.
Can we get balances on these accounts, please?
Sure.
I, I would support another conversation about checks and balances. I think for the, for tonight, getting this warrant approved so the finance committee can have it, I'd move that we approve Article sixty-six, Departmental Revolving Funds Authorization, to be included in the warrant. to be included in the warrant.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Michael?
And just, Chris, I would like to bring that back. And I do think that there should be some checks and balances. I'd like to know what the balances are because maybe there should be a mechanism where this money does go back to pay something else. If they're ending up building large funds and not spending the money, I think we should look at maybe getting some of that money back for the taxpayers.
It's actually, the first one was Article 63 and then the second one was Article 66. Do you want to do them both in concert?
So I was moving to approve the one, oh, Article, I'm sorry. Article 63 was the one that I was making the motion for.
Okay. And then 66 has the amounts in it.
Mm-hmm.
We kind of need both.
Might as well do both of them together.
All right, I'm moving to approve Article 63 and 66 to be included in the warrant.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye. We don't want. I would say, just on that, we actually did have on the golf that there was a requirement that the assistant look at all golf things out of that revolving account. So we have been doing that ever since I've been here where golf does get, everything in the revolving account does get looked at and initialed by myself. So, you know, certainly there is some mechanisms. I was not asked to review other ones. That was the only one in particular that I remember, but certainly there are additional controls that can be put in place.
And we'll get a balance on those funds.
We can do the balances. And everything is audited. I mean, just all these accounts are audited.
And an oversight matrix. Not just the balance, I want to go where the authority stops, who has authority to expend.
All right, so we'll do.
Without any further approvals.
So we'll look for the balance in the accounts and a matrix on expenditures, oversight on expenditures. Michael, did you have another comment?
Yeah, just again, to bring that back so we can have that conversation. I know there was an issue which has led into a much bigger issue where things were being parted out, different contracts, and I think Don's right. I think some oversight is necessary.
Ed?
Yeah, you know, but if you look at all of these authorizations, it's a director, a director, administrator, director, community center director, town planner, treasurer, collector, all of those individuals are subject to direction by the town administrator, you know, for in terms of providing oversight. Just make it a rule that not only the golf fund expenditures, but expenditures out of all funds after receiving the statutory authorization then need to be approved by the administrator.
And that would be fine.
Yeah.
We need to have that discussion.
Okay.
And I guess the other question, the other issue that Michael raised, you know, on the issue about carrying over, in some cases you want to carry over funds to, you know, you know you have an expense that's coming up three years from now and you want to bank it so you don't have to do a free cash request or something of that nature. The water department in their enterprise fund, they have a thing called retained earnings, which they build up to take care of a major project that they know is coming at them. So.
Right, Michael?
I agree with Ed, with the exception of if the wetlands fund's up to 1.2 million, maybe we're putting too much money in it. So that's why I want to look at it.
Okay, so anyway, we're going to be getting the balances on the account, having that conversation and getting an oversight matrix on expenditures.
Moving along.
And if that clause of having administrator look at, I mean, certainly look at the golf, myself or the assistant could look at these as they come in. I mean, I certainly would be amenable to that if that gives additional oversight to the point. Just, I realized on the pet burial ground, just to kind of let you guys know the flow, make sure you're comfortable with it, and I think I did this pretty much as suggested. We have a citizens petition under Article 58, which is to rescind. I did meet with Mr. Parity today and did a draft motion for him and sending that for legal review to make sure that that's appropriate. So it has, 58 would be the citizens petition to rescind or move that from the cemetery commission. 59 would be the revolving account, to create the revolving account for the pet burial ground, which would allow for funding to come in and then be segmented aside. And then Article 60 would then be the appropriation to appropriate the full amount to finish that project on that site. So it is possible that if number one is not passed and number two passes, 59 passes and 60 pass, that that would then mean that the project would continue and come to fruition and finalize. If one is voted in the affirmative to revert control back to the selectmen and then 59 and 60 are not funded, not voted, then there would be, it would then defer to the cemetery commission for their consideration because as Attorney Giorgio said, it's a two-stage process, but without any funding source to finish the work, the work wouldn't be finished.
There is also the possibility of an amendment to the capital plan.
Yes.
I'm just bringing it up.
On the capital plan, too, I probably should say, capital outlay met last, I'm getting my days mixed up, I've had a lot of meetings. I think it was last Wednesday night and they did vote to amend the capital plan. One of the requests that was made was from the cemetery commission, was to strike the crematory. So that was removed from that based upon a board vote.
In terms of timing, though, if I recall what Attorney Giorgio said correctly, it was that you can have the town meeting vote and then go to the cemetery. One doesn't have to precede the other, correct?
I believe that's correct.
Right. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since the discussion is centering around what happens if, I'm just pointing out that earlier on, you can't change the sequence of that. Earlier on in the meeting, one of the very first articles is to accept and adopt the capital plan. If somebody were to make an amendment to pull the pet burial ground out of that, that affects the discussion that you're having also. Because then there is no capital approval from a town meeting.
I'd have to give a little bit more thought to that, but conceivably that could create an issue.
They have never gotten, never received a capital plan approval. They've never sought one for this particular item. So if it were amended out, I don't know how you would move forward with it.
I'm not sure if they're that, I'm not sure if they're that tied. I think you can have a capital plan and I think you can have an article in the warrant and I think you can approve one and not approve the other, but I don't think they're tied directly like that. I would have to think on it some more, too, but I think you could, somebody could vote to take it out of the capital plan on Article nine or 10 or whatever one that one is. That's a no-charge article that just tells us is what the plan is, that would take a two-thirds vote. Then later you get to the article that funds this and that can certainly be done.
See, right, that could pass and then you'd have that taken out of the plan.
If anyone wanted to, I did add a few explanations in there for ones that I thought may be a little bit confusing. So if anyone sees anything that they think we should add more, let me know and we can try to incorporate those.
Ed?
Okay, looking at Articles 59 and 60, which is the revolving fund and the construction of the pet burial grounds, 59. The revenue source is defined as from revenue received from the sale of pet burial lots and fees, but in terms of completing the construction of the pet burial grounds, funds contained within this appropriation are to come from the sale of pet burial lots. So any revenue we get from fees, we can't spend on construction of the pet burial ground.
Are you saying in Article 60, Ed, just?
I didn't say that.
Well, if you could only sell.
I see what you're saying. We should probably amend that to two fees.
Should ought to be consistent, you know?
Yep, just to be consistent.
So I'd hate.
To build and operate.
Yeah, yeah.
But I didn't help you with that.
No, no.
I'll add that in, fees, so it mirrors.
Michael?
So what number is Don talking about in the capital plan?
If they took the project out, there'd be no capital improvement to expend to build it.
But then you could vote it on the, under the article so it doesn't really.
Yeah, I don't necessarily, if something's not on the capital plan, can you then not vote it as an article, as a standalone article?
Then why would you have a capital plan?
Well, I don't, I don't know what the.
Well, it would seem that you couldn't take it out of the capital plan. It doesn't, it seems to me that you wouldn't take it out of the capital plan unless the article didn't pass.
It seems like we should encourage people to just vote these three in terms of what direction you want to go, in terms of it not affect the whole capital plan for the town.
Right, yes, I agree.
That's part of the discussion, the cleanup of the capital plan. If you have an item that's on the plan, it only takes a simple majority to pass it. But if you submit an article, some other department or whatever submits an article that by definition meets the definition of a capital project, then it takes a two-thirds vote to pass. That's what that language in there cleans up, is that this is going to take a two-thirds vote.
An article in the charter, Section 9-6-7 currently says that it would require a two-thirds vote of town meeting.
But I kept it down.
If, yes.
Okay.
And even back in the days where the changing in approval and amending of the capital plan was very stringent, there was always an allowance for the lone article to be brought up separate and apart from the capital plan. But it would, without being part of the capital plan, it would require a two-thirds vote, just like any amendment would.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
You'd motion to put it in.
That was voted, 63 and 66, you already voted the.
Yeah, we just voted.
That was voted the other day.
Right.
What are you having here?
I just had a discussion about, I resequenced them, that's all.
Right, to keep them.
And that was something.
Coordinated.
Yep, but they were in.
Mm-hmm.
So if you're ready for the.
Town administrator's report, thank you.
So I have discussed already the lower county roads, I wasn't going to allude to that. Just in the package, Eversource did submit a notice to us about herbicide treatment, so I just wanted to just put that in there so people are aware. We had a March storm last year, so I did put in there, the FEMA is in the process of reimbursing us for some of those costs, I think about $39,000 if I remember right. So that's just a storm, one of the storms that came through. On the planning board waiver of site plan review, I just wanted to kind of disclose that I did go to the planning board and talked about the as-of-right site and the planning board did vote, I believe it was unanimous, to approve the solar field as-of-right. They did have two things, though, just for kind of full disclosure, that they approved removing the trees and kind of prepping the site is what the approval was received. And then they wanted to have the solar company, if a solar company bids on it and is successful, that they have to come back to planning board to talk about what it's going to look like and what mitigation they would do in terms of trying to minimize the site appearance. So I actually did that. CIVAC is doing that work on behalf of the town to try to get these sites approved. Liz Argo was away, so she didn't have a chance to present that. On the joint hearing, I appreciate Ed had brought up at the beginning, but we do have a joint selectmen and finance committee budget hearing here in the Don B. Griffin room this Saturday, starting at 8:00. We have it running until 3:00. Just maybe for folks that may have an interest, we called the order would be at 8:00. 8:05 would be kind of public safety and the treasurer. The late morning session would be golf, water, wastewater assessors and IT. And afternoon would be council on aging, cemetery, youth and rec, community center, Brooks Library, administration, and all others. And the idea is to have wrap-up and follow-up adjournment by 2:45. So if people do want to.
Are we carrying on the longstanding tradition that the FinCom chair brings in the coffee and donuts at 8:00?
I'll defer to him on that. We do have lunch planned.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have coffee and donuts, yes. And are we going to alternate chairs, morning and afternoon? You do the morning, I'll do the afternoon?
That sounds excellent.
I'm disappointed, you guys are supposed to be tight-fisted. You're supposed to say, no, we're not spending any.
Water only.
Michael?
So, Chris, in the packet, FY '20 road maintenance plan? FY '20 road maintenance plan, 1.743458 million.
I think you put that in there just to kind of show the projects that would be deferred in order to do the lower county road, the million dollars on that.
But if you read back through FY '21, '22, '23, it doesn't add what he took out back in. Maybe we can get an explanation on that.
Yeah, he departed, didn't he?
Yeah, it's. Explanation on the road maintenance plan because if we're deferring them, we're going to have to add them someplace else. And if we.
Correct.
If we're putting one point, I'm also a little confused by the number because we, looks like we earmark 1.4 million a year to road maintenance.
And he has one point.
He's got 1.73 and if you read down through the numbers, I mean, they're all well over. The secondary, then there's 1.477 the next year. None of it adds up to 1.4 million. Where's the extra money come from?
He doesn't, he only spends up to the 1.4 is the bottom line.
All right, well, maybe we can get an explanation.
But to your point.
Yeah, we should ask him to kind of reconcile that.
And then I did go also, just for the board's information, last week to the conservation commission. The board had approved the project for CPC and CPC funded to make repairs to Red River Beach. The Red River Beach at the turnaround at the end, it's getting washed out as Red River comes down. It's kind of taking out some of the sand that supports the road surface. So there was a plan that was put together and submitted in accordance with CPC, so the board was aware of this, to kind of stabilize that slope and prevent washout from happening. So the Concom did approve, it was not unanimous, I think they had seven members, it was six to one. So it was voted favorably and it will be sent to the state to see if the state approves that. But that is one of the capital items that's on there for Red River Beach.
Thank you.
Probably go too far.
Go ahead, Don.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Assuming we can't go into the Wayback Machine here for the budget, we still have to agenda submitting our final budget to FinCom. And since it's not on the agenda tonight, it should be on the agenda next Monday. There's nothing we can do about going back to the fourth Tuesday of February, but we really, what we got right now is an administrator's budget, which is not the same as a voted approved budget the board of selectmen to send to them.
We'll add that to Monday. Okay, and.
Madam Chair, while you're talking about the budget, I just have one document I want to give to you folks. I just want to acknowledge publicly that I'm giving you this for our next meeting.
Thank you, Dana.
Did I gloss anything?
But it's Thursday or for Saturday?
Either one.
Okay, thank you, Dana.
That concludes my comments this evening.
Selectmen's report, Don?
Nothing.
Ed?
I've been with our project to try and get a sidewalk along 28 from Harwich Port to the harbor. I've been working with our state senator and state representative's offices and it appears that they are, the Mast Dot folks are going to be on the Cape this Friday. this Friday, and they're seeing if they can arrange, in addition to the other meetings that they're having, time for folks from Harwich to meet with them.
That's great.
Did you mean this Friday, or I thought you said March eighth?
March eighth, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, so next Friday. I want to make sure I have it in my calendar.
That's great.
So see if we can rattle something loose. Both our state senator and state rep will be attending that meeting.
That's great. Thank you, Ed. Thanks for that follow-up. Michael?
I'd like to request an agenda item, probably separate, I think this is a fairly important one, maybe separate from the wastewater, normal wastewater conversations, but back when we voted to bring the D-H-Y legislation, it was, I believe, a three-to-two vote, and at the time, we were being hurried because we were mirroring Mansfield Norton Foxborough's legislation. And I agreed to move it forward, but now that that didn't pass, I'd like to have the conversation about re-including the board of selectmen, at least, and maybe town meeting on the budget, the annual budgets, so that the towns can have some say. So I'd like to bring that conversation back.
Thank you. Okay, I have nothing to add, so.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
So we are adjourned.